We're good to go. All righty. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to this public meeting of the Standing Committee on Procedure and Privileges. My name is Kate Reed. I am the MLA for Great Slave and the Chair of the Standing Committee on Procedure and Privileges. I will now ask members to introduce themselves for the record, starting with my left. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Julian Morse, MLA for Frame Lake.
Good afternoon. My name is Danny Rogers. I'm the MLA for Anuvik Boot Lake.
I guess I don't have to touch it? It's been a while I've been in this room. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Semler. I'm the MLA for Anuvik Twin Lakes and also whole Cabinet portfolio of Minister of Health.
Thank you, members. So today we are holding a public hearing on the Chief Electoral Officer's report on the administration of the 2023 territorial general election. First, we will hear from the Chief Electoral Officer and then we will hear from a representative from Vote 16 Canada Organisation, virtually. Following that, we will open the floor to hear from anyone in the room who may wish to speak and provide feedback on the report. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed to the Assembly's social media channels. And I'd like to remind all members and witnesses to direct all questions and comments through me as the Chair and wait to be recognised before speaking, as this helps us have a smooth meeting. So with that in mind, I'll now pass it over to the Chief Electoral Officer. Please proceed with introductions if you wish and your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Stephen Dunbar. I have the honour of serving as your Chief Electoral Officer. I'm accompanied by Charlotte Digness, Deputy Chief Electoral Officer, and in the back of the room, Kay Sibiston, Elections Operations Officer. Thanks for taking the time to meet with us today and for taking the time for review my report on the 2023 territorial general election. I have a brief presentation on the administration of the election, the initiatives we undertook, and the issues we faced, and recommendations for future elections. I look forward to answering any questions committee may have after that. Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick overview of the 2023 election. Fifty-six candidates ran for office, which was pretty much on par with our historical average. Three were acclaimed. For the first time, we had more than one female candidate acclaimed. Twenty-three candidates were women, which is the highest number of female candidates we've ever had. And they ran in fifteen of the nineteen electoral districts, which again is the highest number of participation for female candidates we've had in an election. Voter turnout was much lower than in 2019. Only two districts saw an increase in voter turnout: Nahende and Hay River South. Turnout was more comparable to the last November election, which was held in 2015. On average, turnout was down about 15% in Yellowknife, Hay River, and Fort Smith. As members likely know, the election had to be delayed due to the evacuation of a large percentage of the population of the territory. On Sunday, August 15th, when Fort Smith, as well as Hay River and Enterprise, were ordered evacuated, it was clear that legislation was going to be required to delay the election. With the consent of the clerk, I did ask the Department of Justice to start preparing a draft bill to delay the election on the morning of August 15th. It was to be considered by caucus on August 17th. However, events overtook and the territory was evacuated, starting on August 17th. Three staff, including myself, relocated to Elections Alberta in Edmonton. And I would like to take this moment to publicly thank my counterpart, then CEO Glenn Resler, and his entire team, who made staff or who made space available in their headquarters, as well as warehouse space, offices, and the event that the election needed to happen for non-impacted districts, the ability to run the election from Edmonton. Three returning officers had to be replaced with the delay of the election. Several polling locations and one returning office also had to be relocated as the space was not available for the new date. The later election date also meant weather started working against us. A blizzard warning was issued in the High Arctic on the last day for nominations. Without road connections, field staff had to be creative in getting to communities with the election supplies. Sikichuk, with no airport and on the opposite bank of the then-closed ferry and ice road, the returning officer had to find staff who were willing to cross the not-yet-frozen river on a snowmobile to bring supplies into the community for the advance poll. It also meant that communities in the Nahende riding had not received their supplies because fog had meant Canada Post was unable to deliver them. So we had to charter a helicopter and then a delivery driver to bring the supplies into Fort Leard for their advance poll. Election 2023 saw several new initiatives undertaken by Elections Northwest Territories. Kids' Vote used an animal-themed ballot and campaign posters to introduce kids aged five to 12 to the voting process. Ballot boxes and materials were provided to schools in nine communities, and some returning offices also had Kids' Vote available. Indigenous language materials were produced, including a how-to-mark-your-ballot-in-every-official-language, posters on ID requirements, a voter's guide, and directional signage. Elections Northwest Territories issued the first regulations and standards governing the use of online voting in Canada, which also included cybersecurity requirements and verifiability. I didn't write down the last word of that. The regulations required that when these guidelines be reviewed and updated prior to any election where online voting is used. Notably, 43% of the voters who used the online option said that they would not have otherwise been able to vote. Following direction from the 19th Legislative Assembly, a candidate rebate program was introduced. Of the fifty-six candidates, thirty-one received the rebate, and the total amount rebated was $48,716. Six candidates were ineligible due to not receiving the minimum percentage of vote or by failing to file their financial report on time. The Register of Territorial Electors is what we create the voters' list from. Work began the voters' list began in April of 2023, where previously the list went into hibernation in between election events. We have moved to more active management, and the voters can now check their registration at any point on our website, as well as update it or register as a new voter. We are also using data sets through information sharing agreements to update the list between elections. This chart shows the number of changes, additions, and deletions made to the list in the months leading up to and immediately following the election. Over half of all entries on the list were updated during this process. This work continues in 2024. We have made over 3,000 updates to the list in the last six months, using updated information from Elections Canada, and this work will continue each year as we move towards the 2027 general election. We are working with other departments to establish information sharing agreements to have access to more data sets. For the recommendations that I made in the report, one of the first is to repeal and replace the Election in Flavits Act. It is one of the most amended pieces of legislation in the Northwest Territories. It is amended at least once every four years, often with substantial new clauses or removing entire subsections. The net result is legislation that has addressed individual issues but has not kept pace with the change in election best practices, nor do the individual amendments address the act as a whole, which can result in misalignment between individual sections. The core of the act dates from the 1970s election ordinance. The 2006 rewrite updated some aspects but happened early in the digital age and did not include and did not consider a permanent electronic register of electors, nor the advent of technology, including tabulators or online voting. The rise of social media was also not factored in. The act lays out minimum spends in order to be considered a third-party advertiser, where spending a fraction of that amount on social media to boost your posts would reach far more voters and would not meet that minimum threshold. The timeframes in the act date from when mail was the only available option to both deliver supplies and to receive ballots. As last year showed, the act also does not contain adequate emergency provisions to deal with unforeseen events. And there is a brief video here. I'll provide a bit of context. One of the new technologies we are certainly seeing is artificial intelligence. And we had a summer student this year who I tasked with a fairly simple challenge: to create a deep fake of me. The parameters around this were he could only use freely available software, he could only use materials that are already available on the internet: photos or videos of me speaking. Obviously not photos, but videos of me speaking. And he had to do it as quickly as possible. This deep fake was created in less than two hours. Hello, I am Stephen Dunbar, Chief Electoral Officer for the NWT. I just want to update voters on new regulations for elections going forward. As of today, if you were born on February 29th, you will not be eligible to vote. Thank you for your understanding. Now, the voice might be a little robotic and less dynamic than I normally speak, but it is my voice. The question becomes, is this an offence under the act? Is it an offence to impersonate an election officer? The act does not contemplate it to be a offence to impersonate a candidate. And we've certainly seen in elections around the world where candidates have been the subject of deep fakes. And that has, in one case that I've looked at, potentially impacted the outcome of the election in Slovakia. Very terrifying. Yeah. And that was using a very basic form of the technology that's already available. The next recommendation is to lower the voting age to 16. Voting is a habit. If people start voting younger, especially before they are out of school or living on their own, they are more likely to continue to vote through adulthood. 16- to 17-year-olds have been found to turn out and vote at higher rates than their 18- to 20-year-old first-time voting peers in countries where the voting age has been lowered. Some places where voting age has been lowered to 16 include Scotland, Wales, the UK Channel Islands. The Labour Government, as in the United Kingdom, had as platform item also to lower the voting age to 16, although they have not yet introduced that amendment. Brazil, Austria, Argentina, and some German states also have already lowered the voting age. Voter turnout in the Northwest Territories remains stubbornly low. For age groups, we don't see a 50% participation rate until 45 and older. For 18- and 19-year-olds, turnout is approximately 10%. And under 25, it's about 13%. Lowering the voting age may allow us the opportunity to increase voter turnout over the course of several elections. As those 60- and 70-year-olds vote and vote again at 20 and again at 24, it is certainly my hope that we will see the voter turnout start to go up as we have more people engaging in the democratic process. And the last recommendation I'll speak to today is to expand the Elections Northwest Territories mandate. We are required to exist by law. We are an agency with elections in our title, and we are frequently contacted about elections by individuals, by candidates, and by the media. Most of those times, we have no role in the election of which we are being contacted. Our team has expertise in elections, and we're more than happy to share that expertise. But we do not act proactively in the elections for which we are not responsible. We have shared resources with community governments when asked. A first step in determining what role communities would like us to play would, we recommend, doing a survey with the Association of Communities to gauge interest from communities on what support they would like to see from us. That support could include supplying materials, training, voters' lists, and helping to communicate both the election and posting of the results. And with that, Madam Chair, thank you, and I will happily answer any questions committee may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dunbar. I'll ask now if members have any questions for Elections NWT. Mr. Morse?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you so much for the presentation. This isn't a question, but I think one of the first things I wanted to say, and I believe I responded to your survey when it came out about this, that I just wanted to say that during the election, the advice, support, responsiveness I received from your office and your staff was absolutely excellent. And so I just wanted to thank you guys for that. I think I just, every time I wrote in, I got a response back right away, and it was so helpful. And staff really bent over backwards to help us figure out our problems with kind of like advertising on Facebook and fitting that under the current act, which, as you've noticed, I didn't. So to get to a specific question, Madam Chair. So the youth turnout, as you've just noted, is like, it's disturbingly low, I would say. I mean, to 10%, 13%, that, those numbers are really, really bad. I'm wondering to what extent have you found or have you seen any evidence on whether that low turnout is also due to election timing and the need for many of those people who are that age group tend to go away for school and needing to vote remotely and just that barrier of remote voting, whether or not they're actually following up and doing that and taking that extra step? Can you speak to that a little bit also? And I'll have a follow-up question on this issue, too.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the comments. Timing of the election is certainly challenging. So on October election, or in last year's case, a November election, means that we know we have close to 1,000 students out of the territory at post secretary. And despite it being easier now to vote than ever before, we have the online option. And every student who receives SFA did receive three emails from myself, reminding them of the election and different ways in which they can vote. We saw very low uptake. This is not necessarily a problem unique to us. You see voter turnout amongst younger demographics, quite low across federal elections and in the provinces as well. In terms of election timing, if the election was happening in, you know, before students left, summer can be a challenging time to hold an election because so many people are either on vacation or out in the land. If it was happening in May or June, again, it's possible. I don't have a lot of data. I know that Alberta, for instance, is looking at moving away from May elections because that is the start of wildfire season, which also has heavily impacted them. There are, there are no good answers right now as the optimum time to hold an election. We certainly have times when we know we, holding the election is more challenging, and November would be one of those times. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Morse, follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and so I guess the recommendation is get them in early. It develops a voting habit, so to speak. And, you know, in looking at a bit of background on this, I did see that they, the way they tried this in Scotland, I believe, was to kind of do it as a bit of a pilot, and then they sort of made it permanent following. I think I'm, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn there. I think that's what I read. But I guess what I would ask is, how do you envision us doing this? Do you think that there's enough evidence? Do you think that they're evident that, you know, whatever? Because it is, it's a fairly new thing to be doing, and I'm open to the idea. I know some, there's hesitancy around it also. Are you suggesting we do it in kind of an experimental way, that it simply be built into the act right away? Do you have kind of some suggestions for us as to how it might be implemented? And indeed, how we might sort of determine public support for such an idea and do it in such a way that could be effective and useful? Because I think it's an interesting idea to look into.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The voting age is set in the act, so the only way to change it would be to amend the act to allow a lower voting age than what's currently set, which is 18. I will note that the voting age was last lowered in 1992, when it went from 19 to 18. That was 22 years after it was lowered federally to 18. So there are, we have precedents within my own lifetime where the voting age has been changed. In terms of whether or not this should be a pilot project or not, I would say if we're going to lower the voting age, once it has been lowered, then it is lowered. I think we have a very hard time saying that we would revert to 18, because you'd have to have some sort of threshold as to why. Voting is a constitutional right under Section 3 of the Charter of Rights, and the Constitution has what's called a reasonable limits restriction. So legislation can say, you know, here's your right to vote, but the reasonable limit is you have to attain a certain age in order to be able to vote. If the territory was to lower it to 16, that would then become the new restriction. You can't, you had to be 16 in order eligible to vote. So I don't really see this as being a pilot project. My recommendation is to lower the voting age to 16. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Up next on my list, I have Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. You mentioned one recommendation is to expand your mandate. Is that due to increasing, I guess, requests from either indigenous governments or municipalities for assistance? Thank you.
Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've certainly received requests from municipalities for support, and we've provided that support when requested. One of the reasons I would look at expanding our mandate is because there are 55 elections in between every territorial election. And that's just the elections that fall under the government of Northwest Territories. So that's municipalities and school education authorities. I know one of the constant complaints from candidates is the quality of the voters' list. One of the issues we face is that every four years, we get to stress-test the voters' list. And the rest of the time, we are making our best efforts, but we don't really get to have a comprehensive effort to update it, because we're relying on people to either go on our website and update their registration, or we are using the data sets available to us. Although I will note that that is also dependent on people updating their healthcare cards and the addresses that they use there, or keeping their voter information updated with Elections Canada. So in terms of expanding our mandate, we have a wealth of supplies, both ballot boxes, voting screens, envelopes, that I think we could easily provide to municipalities to assist them in running elections, instead of municipalities each having to source their own election materials. We have our voters' list, which we are keeping live and are doing our best to keep updated regularly. Municipalities do not always have the same, the same efforts in keeping their voters' lists updated. And that has certainly been, the request from the two municipalities in last year have reached out to us, has been for the voters' list. And we have provided that. The act currently allows us to do that upon request. Other areas of support is, we have received questions in the past, often from district education authorities, about various clauses of the act that are not always easy to understand. And, you know, what do we do if no one runs? That was one question we received. And we can certainly go through legislation and provide the guidance, but that is always with the caveat that, and now you need to talk to Macca to convert this. So those are areas where I think we could provide some additional assistance. We are certainly not recommending that we come in and take over the election administration. We are here to assist and support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Follow-up, Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that answer. And yeah, and I'm glad to see that the register is being tracked on regularly. I know we had some conversations about that throughout the campaign as well, particularly, obviously, in communities with several ridings, and people tend to move and not update it and getting that information straight. It's great, so I'm glad to hear that. And you mentioned school boards and municipalities, and obviously, I don't know if we have any input then as well, particularly for a municipality. And I was thinking more of an indigenous government as well. I know we don't, they do their own elections, but, you know, have they reached out to, let's say, ask for some assistance on their election bylaw or how their elections are ran? Both those and municipalities, I guess, would it go that far? I notice it's not noted at here with ballot boxes and sharing informations on the voters' list, and I think that's great, but would it go a step further to actually say, you may want to look at this in your elections bylaw as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, if someone reached out to us and asked for assistance in developing a bylaw, we would be more than happy to assist. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Next on my list, I have Ms. Semler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I kind of want to add on to my colleague, Mr. Emily Morse. I know there was a lot of discussion, and not sure if it was this, prior to this election, but trying to pre-register younger voters in that discussion. Can I just ask, where are we at with that? Or are we able to do that? Is there legislative changes that need to happen?
Thank you, Ms. Semler. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the amendments introduced in 2022 allowed us the authority to introduce the Register of Future Electors, which can register 16- and 17-year-olds on a separate list, and upon turning 18, they would move over to the Register of Territorial Electors. We have, I think when I checked this morning, 63 people aged 16 and 17 registered on that list right now. We are hoping to undertake some more efforts to get into the schools to start a bit more of a youth registration drive. But as of this point, we have not made active efforts to keep that list.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Follow-up, Ms. Semler?
Thank you. Yeah, I know, I feel like, yeah, there needs to be more of that, not just from your own department, but I think even us as MLAs, we do get the opportunity to go in and, you know, and I think the education system, working with people who run in elections, to collaborate, to be able to have that. One of the things that I heard from one of the communities that I was in is that our kids don't even know who our, their MLAs are and don't know who an MLA is. And this is what I heard while I was just visiting the SOTU, is it would be nice to have something in the school to be able to, you know, at the beginning of a school year to be able to say, you know, this is your MLA, this is the government, this is this. And especially for those who are wanting to pre-register, you know, into this, because they don't know who we are, they don't know what we do, they don't feel like they have a voice. And it's, you know, and then the other part is, is that if you're coming as an indigenous, you know, you're, you know, yours, as a youth, you know, you're always kind of made to feel like you need to be involved in, you know, our youth are our future and indigenous, but they're not taken to part of those votes or, you know, and things like that. So I think, how are we reaching out with indigenous communities, smaller communities? I guess it's like, when you say you have 63, are those all from Yellowknife? Are they regional centres? Do we have some from small? Because one of the things that I heard about when I was reaching out as well during the campaign to the students and my constituents were that it's too complicated to figure all this stuff out. I'm not in the territory. If I need this form, I don't have it with me to upload or do or this. So how do we reach out to those to have them so that way, when it's voting time, then we just have to open, make an account and click? So.
Thank you, Ms. Semler. To you, Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Most of those 63 are currently in Hay River and Anuvik. This is using information from Elections Canada, and those are the two communities that we have so far done the updates for. We are still working through the several thousand other names that we have to update to our list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. I have a question from one of our members online. Mr. Hawkins, could you unmute yourself?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my computer just froze. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Yeah, my computer's doing that shadow with the swirl right now. Okay, I'll just jump into it. If you can't hear me, just let me know and then move on, and I'll come back. So first of all, thank you to the presenters. I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you to the committee. I'm not a committee member, but as a member of the Assembly, I can come to these things. And of course, this process is very important, and I sincerely respect the folks doing the election. It is probably a thankless job most days, including the detail and the hard work that they need to do to bring this, an election to a good end, you know? I just want to point out a couple of quick things. First of all, I sincerely support the idea of expanding the anti-elections mandate. And what I would do, it is an opt-in, opt-out approach. So I would, you know, from a member's point of view of the Assembly, is I would recommend that the elections legislation specifically opens the door to allow municipal municipalities or indigenous governments or whomever, including school boards, whomever wishes to engage. And then we look at, then take it to the next phase as to how we consider the opt-in and working together. How I would envision it, Madam Chair, is that anti-election still retains the CEO and deputy CEO of elections principally, but they continue on the local ground, like in the community or in the community government, to contain and maintain a deputy CEO of some sort that therefore, that, you know, so two simple examples, the town of Fort Simpson, you know, the person there is the deputy in the community, that is, the clerk is still the deputy. The town of Fort Simpson, you know, the person there is the deputy in the community, that is, the clerk is still the deputy CEO of elections, and they work up the line with the Elections NT. If you're in a community government, say, a teecha government, you know, they still maintain control over their aspects of their election fully, but they work with the resources and the talents created. So we're creating not only synergies, but equity in the sense of information process and sharing of information. That way, we can continue to build on both skills, talent, we can encourage talent, and finally, the consistency in messaging and process probably brings strength and credibility to the overall of all elections, knowing they're working together. Just even quicker on the next issue, which is the lowering the age. I actually, I feel a lot more work still needs to be done on this particular issue. The dynamics of voting turnout is a problem, and you can see statistically, it sucks in Yellowknife in comparison to other regions. But does that, you know, 53% overall or 45 in Yellowknife, does that speak to a broader picture? I think it actually is a weather, a bellwether issue that we should be stopping and pausing on. So by dropping it by two years, you know, even, I'm worried it won't meet the issue, which is, you know, why are people so disconnected? I mean, we could largely drop the voting age to age one. And of course, every year you open it up, you open up a new pool of potential voters, which, you know, statistically will mean more votes or technically, but I'm not sure that's the issue. I think the engagement's the principal. And if you look at the age bracket of 18 to 22, where it represents, I think, 7%, I mean, that tells me that a lot of work still needs to be done. So I think this is something that I think is worthy of research. I don't know if a special project is required, but in the sense of a test run, but I do think we shouldn't be afraid of talking about it. And the last area I'll point on on this particular issue is that I think MLAs have an individual role, including Elections NT, and it should be part of our education program with the Department of Education, where it really gets embedded early. Now, I know they have civics programming specifically and education policy, but that said, I think maybe if the issue is about being more robust. And as I finish these general comments off, Madam Chair, and again, I'm grateful to provide them. I have found through my experience that, you know, people are either engaged or they're not, and often it's when they're frustrated, they exercise either their discontent through voting or their discontent and frustration by ignoring the system. So I think it's incumbent on all of us to be part of the solution for engagement. And if it means MLAs going to schools, meeting kids, if it means Elections NT, you know, doing more public campaigns about how to get involved, I mean, I would encourage that. So I think personally, as I finish this off, saying low turnout of 53% might be a different signal than than just trying to expand the voter pool. It should be asking people more the question is, why are they not voting? And, you know, the 18 to 22 is the most connected, you know, group of our society that I, at least I am aware of. So they could vote quite easily online. And, oh, which, my apologies, Madam Chair, one very last thing is, I don't have an issue with the online process, but there's still a lot of stress about the engagement of it, which is people found it very difficult. And the cutoff date, which I can appreciate, you need a cutoff date, but people are frustrated by the cutoff date a week before the election. So just some observations and quick comments. Thank you very much for the time to provide it, and I think that's probably it for now at this particular second. Tried to grab a few issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Several questions there for Mr. Dunbar. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not write them down, but I will do my best to answer those. In terms of the cutoff dates for the absentee ballot applications, that is something that we have flagged as an issue. That is prescribed in legislation right now, that the application period closes 10 days before the election. And again, that dates from a time when it was contemplating only mail to return the ballot. In terms of voter turnout, I don't have any evidence as to the why or the wherefores of voter turnout. When I look at turnout by community, Hay River hits 67% voter turnout, starting at age 40. In Yellowknife, it hits 55% voter turnout, starting at 65. In Anuviq, it hits 50% voter turnout, starting at 45. In Fort Smith, it hits 51% voter turnout, starting at 35. And in the communities, it starts 55% starting at 45. So it's kind of all over the map. When I look at federal election results, I certainly see that voter turnout, in terms of sheer number of votes cast, goes up in Yellowknife and down most other places. So federal elections, Yellowknife tends to be more engaged than they are territorially, and the inverse is true for territorial elections. In terms of the community expanding our mandate, yes, we are certainly not looking at taking over community elections. We are looking at how can we best support communities in running their elections. And my apologies to Mr. Hawkins if I've forgotten one of his questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Hawkins, is there anything else you'd like him to touch on?
No, I would just say I think he's done enough. I just would only underline, I think more survey work needs to be done in my populations, and I appreciate the CEO's point of view, which, or details, which is voting turnout is different federally versus territorially. I mean, we can anecdote this to death, but perhaps a bit of a case study on engagement would be worth asking and spending some time on, and then maybe we can sharper focus on some legislative solutions. So I would welcome that. And by the way, I wasn't underscoring that they control community elections, be it municipal or Indigenous, but I think they could be sort of the cornerstone or the keystone to how all those things work. And if we created an avenue for everyone to work together, who knows, maybe we'll bring credibility and extra strength for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Dunbar, that was a little bit more of a comment than a question, but if you'd like to respond? No? All right. Next on my list is Mr. Testart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies for not being there in person. I have some childcare obligations today. I just wanted to pick up on that last exchange. Do you have, I found it very interesting that the voter turnout is inverse between federal and territorial elections. And with respect to Yellowknife versus the other regions, do you have any sense of why that is, other than the nature of those elections themselves, one national, one local, or one more localized? Has anyone studied this, either academically or from an agency perspective at Elections NWT? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tester. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not aware of any academic studies. From my own review of the information at hand, my best guess is that in a national election, there's a lot of media play, where residents in Yellowknife might be more attuned to what is going on nationally because of the media they are consuming. Territorial elections, the candidates are much closer to home. So we have 19 districts in the territory as opposed to one federally. So if you are in Fort Leard, for instance, in a territorial election, you are far more likely to know the candidate running for office than you might be in a federal election where it might just be a name and a party listed. And you've never met this person, you don't know who they are because they are from a completely different region of the territory. So in federal elections, you tend to see candidates who are, you know, in the last three elections, I think we have had two candidates from Anuviq, one candidate from Fort Smith, one candidate from Fort Providence, and several candidates from Yellowknife running federally. In territorial elections, we have multiple candidates running from the communities in a much smaller geographic area than we do run federally. So I think in a territorial election, you might see better voter turnout than a federal election in small communities because you are more likely to know the candidates who are running. And then in a federal election, you are more likely to, if you just consume national media, you're far more likely to hear about a federal election than you are a territorial election if you live in Yellowknife. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Testart, follow-up?
A separate topic, but thank you for that. And thank you for all the hard work you guys do. Your, the elections agencies are free and fair elections, shall we say, are a great subject of debate these days. And it's nice to know we have very competent, like very competent agency here in the Northwest Territories that is very experienced in pulling off successful electoral events. So thank you for that. To the, this is a more, a candidate-driven question, but it's something that Yellowknife candidates have to contend, have to contend with often, which is attendance at forums or debates. And these are put on by independent organizations and are invitational. And other systems there are kind of coalitions, like national-level coalitions that put together, of media groups that put together debate forums that are the official debates, to kind of manage that a bit. If the role of Elections NWT was expanded, could facilitating forums and debates and other campaign events like that be included in your mandates? Would you feel that would be appropriate and practicable with your current resources? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testart. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not aware of any election agency in the country that is responsible for coordinating or facilitating any of the candidate forums that may happen. I would have doubts of our ability to do so outside of Yellowknife, which is where our headquarters is located. And I would have some reservations about us playing some sort of facilitator or watchdog role in those forums. These are opportunities for other organizations to flag areas of interest for them, and it is up to the candidates on whether or not they attend. I certainly can understand why candidates feel they have to attend such a forum. But absent any sort of legislative framework that would give us clear guidance in how we are supposed to determine what forums go ahead and which ones don't, I would feel very reluctant to take on that responsibility, given that we would then be subject to some fairly fair criticism, I would gather, if we approved this forum but not that forum. And that puts us as the, in terms of it is our role to conduct the election, if we are then also trying to decide who gets a forum and who doesn't, that puts us into a little bit more of a political role that I'm not comfortable with. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dunbar. Second round of questions from members. I have Ms. Sumler.
Thank you. I know that one of the things that came up in this past election, and you've mentioned it in your recommendations, is food and light snack being offered. And I know that it did come up around our region, and many of, many people who are having any type of gathering, especially in the smaller communities, you know, when they come out, it's usually come out, we have a community feast, kind of, not necessarily like when you say feast, it's, we'll have soup and bannock, or we'll have chili and donuts, and we'll feed people to sit while they're, you know, you know, you might have a barbecue, you might, you know, something like that. But then, then it's like, that's, and I see it in the report, that it's not necessarily going to convince the next person to, and, you know, every single one of us in our community that ran in the election, I think in initial, had food, and then there was no more food because everybody was in fear that there, that if you served food, you might, you know, be able, you know, not get elected because you did something wrong. And so I'm just wondering, maybe we have to, like, if we're opening up and we're making changes to this, that we make sure that we take in account and cultural practices. And I mean, you know, gatherings in small communities all revolve around food, so.
Thank you, Ms. Sumler. I had bannock at one of my events, but yes, point well taken, Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is one of those areas where the Act is both overly prescriptive and overly vague. And it is, as you mentioned, one of the areas that I have recommended we change. So one of the go-tos that I did during the election was I looked at the Nunuvut Election Act, which was initially based off ours. And they have a specific carve-out clause, that food provided by a candidate at a campaign function does not fall under that offence provision. And when reviewing that clause with my legal counsel, we do not have that same clause in our legislation at this moment. And that's where a lot of our issues came from, is light snacks is not defined anywhere in legislation. But nor is it, nor do we have a carve-out for campaign events. And this is certainly where, one of those areas where the Act is overly prescriptive, but also too vague to be helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Ms. Sumler, follow-up?
No, I just, I think that it might, you know, for something that's, I don't think it is swaying a vote in the Northwest Territories to provide some food at an election to become such a big part of some of the complaints and the work that your office has to do. I think it's something that we should clean up, those little things, because it is, it is part of gathering. You know, and whether you're going to support that person or not, you know, we all know, they're going to come and eat anyway, whether they support us or not.
Thank you, Ms. Sumler. I'll take that more as a comment. But I do have a question myself, actually, that falls very closely in alignment with that, around legislative changes. So during your presentation, I did ask staff, what would the process look like to do a repeal and replace, as you have noted in your report? And for stat officers, it seems to be a little bit, let's just say, vague or complicated. And so how in terms of process would it look like, from your perspective, if committee and the, both committee and the government agree to a repeal and replace? Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When the Act was last rewritten in 2006, the work to do so was undertaken by my office. And it was the then CEO who did the bulk of the drafting instructions, worked with the Department of Justice on the final product, that then came to the Legislative Assembly for final consideration. And certainly, I would be more than happy to take on that work in the next two years and bring forward the drafting instructions to this committee for review and comment before it goes to justice, but also if there were any big policy questions that came up, to seek your guidance on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Are there any further questions from committee? Seeing none around the room, and I believe none online, I would like to thank you very much for your time and your presentation. We have another presenter coming through online here momentarily, so we'll just take a quick pause to switch over. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. So once again, thank you to Elections NWT for coming and presenting. Next, we will hear from Alexei Tovianin, I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong, of Vote 16 Canada. Please proceed with your remarks.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the committee for hosting this session, and thank you, of course, to the committee staff who helped me get here today. I got to say, it's a little embarrassing that I struggle with the audio in the beginning of the meeting, hard to make me come across as a representative for young people if I can't get the tech to work. But in any case, it's really wonderful to be here today. My name is Alexei Tovianin. I am the co-founder, general coordinator of Vote 16 Canada. We are a national advocacy group dedicated to the extension of voting rates to 16 and 17-year-olds in federal, provincial, territorial, and municipal elections. Recently, we've won municipal campaigns in Pendicton, British Columbia, Whitehorse, Yukon. We've got a bill in the Senate. We've got a motion forthcoming at Toronto City Council. We've got active campaigns in Yukon, B.C., Ontario, Alberta. We've got stuff going on all over the place. It's a busy time for us. And therefore, it will be no surprise to this committee that I'm interested in speaking about the Chief Electoral Officer's recommendation on extending voting rights to 16 and 17-year-olds. The Chief Electoral Officer's recommendation is certainly important for all of the reasons he outlined, and on top of that, young people want it. Elections Canada has found that 50% of 16 and 17-year-olds in Canada support their right to vote, and an additional 20% have expressed no opposition to the idea. In addition to the reasons he gave, though, it's important to also be aware of two simultaneous social trends that are unfolding across Canada. Youth voter turnout rates remain low pretty much across the board, as he noted, but also the population is getting older. A portion of the population over the age of 65 is growing, the portion under the age of 15 is shrinking. And an aging population is affecting the Northwest Territories in particular as well. This means that unless we act, unless we do something, the voices of young people are going to be increasingly found out in our civic life, in addition to all the unique challenges they face in the territory. My research on this issue has been published in the Journal of Parliamentary Political Law. We've reached a point where we can say confidently that 16 and 17-year-olds are ready to vote and will do so with maturity when presented with an opportunity. Seventeen countries have now enacted this change for at least one level of government. They've been doing it for decades. Austria lowered it nationally in 2007. I won't go into all the cases, but in three of these countries, Austria, Germany, and Belgium, scholars decided to look at the quality of vote choice among these young new new voters to see the extent to which these young voters can vote with capacity when measured against adults. And they found that, yes, 16 and 17-year-olds make their voting decisions as effectively and as competently as adults do. On top of that, Elections Canada has found that 16 and 17-year-olds are just as politically knowledgeable as their adult peers are. They know just as much about the political institutions, the campaign promises, the candidates. International research also suggests that they're more likely to be self-critical, more willing to see gaps in their knowledge, and then seek out more sources of information, whereas as we age, we develop more biases and heuristics. I think that's worth keeping in mind. Data shows that voter turnout increases when you enact this change, both in the short term among those young voters and in the long term as more of them develop voting habits that stand the test of time. In terms of the whys and the wherefore of turnout, which were previously mentioned, one of the reasons why 18- to 22-year-olds don't vote that much is 18 is a terrible time to start voting. You know, you're moving away from home, you're starting post-secondary, or a job, very likely you're moving to a wholly new electoral district. For us, 16, you're in a familiar and supportive community. You have connections, you have relationships. And it's at a far more ideal time to start voting, which is why we see in pretty much every case where the voting age has been lowered and the research has been done, 16 and 17-year-olds vote more than older first-time voters. Scotland lowered the voting age in 2014. We now have a decade of research in there. These habits stick around. People maintain strong voter turnout as they age. On top of that, young people are some of the most engaged when it comes to the non-electoral forms of civic participation. Again, Elections Canada has found that 16 and 17-year-olds raise and donate money more, they boycott and they march more, they volunteer more. Do not think for a second that they're apathetic, they're incredibly engaged. Of course, it's just a problem of when they start voting. In terms of pilots, I'll mention that there's been one pilot on this issue in Canada, P.E.I. highlighted this policy in 2016 for their electoral reform oversight, and they witnessed affirming results. 16 and 17-year-olds voted at a higher rate of turnout in that election than everyone in the ages of 18 and 44. I think that's also worth keeping in mind. So on top of all this, 16-year-olds pay taxes, right? They pay sales taxes, and if they have a job, they pay income taxes as well. If their money is going to be spent on government policy, it seems to make sense that they would have a say on what this policy is going to be. In light of all of this, we can really no longer justify withholding, you know, voting rates from them. So, you know, what are we waiting for? Let's do this already. I will say, I... We'll leave it to your consideration whether you proceed with a pilot or not. I'll present the alternate opportunity, you could just give municipalities, make the decision for themselves, let them set their own voting age. I'm sure that there are communities who would be interested in that. In either case, you could study the outcomes and make further decision from there. I know there are a number of scholars across Canada who are interested in this policy. I'll close up with this. Fourteen municipal councils have passed motions in support of this policy for studying it across Canada. There's a voting age court challenge at the Ontario Superior Court. Every year, someplace around the world lowers the voting age. Sooner or later, Canadian 16 and 17-year-olds will have the right to vote. So if you enact this change, the Northwest Territories can become a national leader in our country's democratic civilization. I think that'd be kind of cool. So thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Members, are there any questions? Mr. Rogers, please.
Yeah. Thank you, and thank you very much for your presentation. Certainly appreciate your time. Question, more of a comment, I guess. And I've had... Listen, I've raised three teenagers. My youngest just turned 18, so we have lots of political, obviously, debate in my household around, not specifically this issue, but certainly it's been brought up. But one of the things that we discuss, and we're not... We don't have party politics here in the Territories, as you know, we're a consensus government, so that doesn't come into play. But you'll hear some critics, I guess, of that saying, well, typically... Or I guess critics from the party system say, you know, they kind of say that all, you know, all young people, obviously, they're, you know, they haven't made their way in life, so if you're a... If you're more of a fiscal type of voter, you know, you... They would criticize saying, well, they haven't got to a point where they've had savings, or they haven't been involved in the workforce as much, therefore typically, you know, they would lean a certain way politically. And the majority of the people between the ages of 16 and 17 would certainly be leaning to vote that way. I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying you hear that criticism out there. Is that something that you run into during your advocacy and your research? Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks so much for the question.
Sorry, just have to go through the chair. Apologies. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll remember that for next. It's certainly a consideration that's come up in the past. I can only emphasize that we're talking about democratic rights here. Section 3 of the Charter says every citizen of Canada shall have the right to vote. In addition to that, the U.N. Convention on the Rights of Children say that when there are decisions being made about young people, young people should provide their input on the decisions being made. We welcome people of all sorts of perspectives and backgrounds. We don't say you have to have had a job before you can vote. We don't say you have to have saved $5,000 or $10,000 before you can vote. We say, you're a citizen, you're a certain age, you get to vote. Of course, it still makes sense to draw that line somewhere. The reasons I recommend drawing that line at 16 comes partly from the international precedent I mentioned, the fact that cognitive capacity, the specific kind of cognitive maturity required for voting, which is what we call old cognition, is outlined by Dr. Lawrence Steinberg, matures by 16. And Elections Canada has found, you know, positive results when it comes to their civic engagement and their political knowledge as well. These things, I think, make a total case for their enfranchisement. Additional considerations like work experience or savings shouldn't come into play when deciding who gets to vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Rogers, follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that. And I certainly wasn't implying that. I'm just... But just to say, I appreciate your advocacy on behalf of the youth vote, and I think it's great what you're doing. And I'm sure we'll have a very interesting debate and conversation here in the Territories. And who knows, perhaps we will become the leaders of the nation in this area. But thank you.
Thank you so much. I now have Mr. Testart with a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, thank you for being here today. I appreciate seeing, you know, activists leading the charge on this, because it's always good to reconsider how we do things, how our institutions do things, and to reflect on, you know, these trends that are growing. My one question is, I don't know if you can answer this, but the enthusiasm and engagement statistics that you raised today around when 16-year-olds are given the opportunity, that they're more engaged, they volunteer more, they fundraise more, all these things that we want in political life. Why then do we see very low turnouts amongst that, like in the Northwest Territories, from like 18 to 25? Because I find it hard to believe that the two years that they're not enfranchised, they're like, well, I've done that, I've lost all my enthusiasm. And it's like, I was a young liberal. I campaigned with the MP, and my parents were volunteers as well. And I got... I mean, I'm still really keen on politics, obviously, but that was formative for me, for sure. But I didn't need to vote to do those experiences, and I remained engaged all the way. But I feel like still I was the outlier. I didn't notice, you know, like, apart from like activists, and more people are online, and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, maybe you can address that, because I would assume that if that enthusiasm is there at 16, the presence of the enfranchisement, to me, just didn't have that much of an impact on dampening that enthusiasm. It's like you'd be more interested to vote when you turn 18. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testart. And over to you, Alexi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, my first thought here comes from the social science research displaying that voting is a social act. Yosef Bati and... I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the other author's name. Maybe I can send this to you after. The Social Act of Voting is the name of the paper, where they disclose international experiences where 18- to 20-year-olds have trouble putting down roots. They have trouble making the community connections in a new and unfamiliar setting, which could be part of the reason why they don't vote. Of course, as you indicated, that's probably not the whole story. We know, however, that 16 and 17-year-olds are better supported in a number of ways. I know here in Ontario, they have civic education, grade 10. They have the chance to bring politicians into their schools. A lot of the opportunities that we get to become civic actors, to become citizens, comes in high school. A great deal less comes after you hit 18, where you're turning to work, or training, or university. The rest of this, I think, will come down to the individual. I will... I'll certainly send you the paper that I'm thinking of, because there's a lot of useful information in there. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Testart. Do you have a follow-up? Or was that your follow-up? I'm sorry.
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Mr. Hawkins.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the presenter and their perspective, by all means. I'm a little cautious at this particular time, as I'm sure you've heard from many people over the years, so I won't be new... My comments probably won't be new to you. It's not like it's a no, but I still think it needs further examination. I think we still have to understand fully of why the 18- to 24 bracket struggles, why different things change. But I'll make some true, concrete, experience, on-the-ground observations, which was when I first ran for city council, I wasn't the youngest, but I certainly was younger and was elected. And one of the first things I noted for people told me is they didn't care about city politics until they needed to care. And I'm like, well, what does that mean? And they go, well, when I owned a house, or a home, or whatnot, I pay taxes. Or my kids now go to the swimming pool, and now I care about the cost. So my point being is engagement and relevance really matters, and I think I really saw it and understood in the context, people just don't, you know... I'm not speaking for everyone, I'm not trying to get statistical on this point, but I saw an overwhelming change in people's attitudes when they all of a sudden had a work... Had an issue to be concerned about. And hence, there was the bridge of engagement. My worry is we're not spending enough time examining the relevance of the ages of 18 to 24, asking ourselves a tough question, why do they care and why they don't care? We have online voting, and it's, you know, I feel it's a confident statement, maybe not a technical one, but the 18- to 24 is largely connected in a lot of ways. And even watching people in that bracket, you know, they don't want to vote online. And it's so easy to vote from home, in your pajamas, in front of your TV, or whatever you want to do nowadays, like you could do whatever. So, but we're not getting the uptick in online voting, we're not getting the crossing the ballot process voting for that age. So I would just be cautious on just saying, dropping it to 16, to say, oh, we're going to solve voting problems. I think the voting problem that you're identifying with, in my opinion, seems to be clear, which is making it relevant to people, and relevant draws engagement. And I think that's a number-one problem. Like Mr. Testart just a moment ago, I was thinking along the same lines. We can't have lost a whole population or a generation of people by delaying it, by not allowing it to happen. So in other words, if we don't allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote, have we lost them forever? And I mean, that could be kind of the basis of your argument. I don't necessarily... I wouldn't necessarily subscribe to that. But I can say, like, I get your point. But, you know, youth is about waiting for opportunity. And, you know, it's in the sense of we all mature enough to next phases of our life, and arbitrarily dates are... Dates and ages are picked for various reasons, some for good reasons, some for no reasons. There's a cutoff, right? So 16, why not make it 14? Why not make it 10? Like, where do you go with that? And the last piece I'll say is, I appreciate your advocacy, and undeniably, I think this is a question that shouldn't go away, but I think it's a question of not saying, well, we're going to solve our election voting problems by just expanding the brackets until... Because, I mean, no offense, let's just make it legally mandatory. And then we've solved all our election problems in the sense of, you know, turnout. But that's not the route I would recommend. But I'm just saying that expanding it by two years, yeah, we'll get a couple... We'll get a few people voting, and then we'll be asking ourselves, why do we do that? And it'll be entrenched, and that'll be the way it is. So I think further study is required. But thank you very much for your time. I sincerely appreciate your passion. It does resonate, and I think your enthusiasm won't be going away, but not sure we're ready yet. And the Northwest Territories is never seen as a leader on almost any issue, so I'm sort of going to say, I wish we were. But this one, I think, needs further research. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins, thanks for that. I'll turn it over to you, Alexi, to respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I can certainly understand the desire to try the little sample of ice cream before you buy the cone, and it seems like that's what you're referencing here. At the same time, I also empathize with Mr. Dunbar's remark that we're talking about, you know, human rights here, section 3 of Charter rights, and therefore, the stakes are a little higher. I would start by finding out that the voting age issue is not a question of how we solve all our voting problems. The voting age issue, I think, is at least a recognition of one problem, the age imbalance that I mentioned at the start. Population's getting older. And unless we do something, young voices are not only going to remain depressed, they're going to be increasingly depressed, they're going to be increasingly drowned out in civic life. When it comes to the arbitrariness of a voting age, certainly, age is always going to be an imperfect proxy for the things we want to measure in deciding who gets to vote. But I think 16 is the least arbitrary age because of the wealth of international research we have, because of the evidence around cognitive science. I should mention that this point, I'm sorry I didn't mention earlier, I've submitted to the committee, in addition to what I'm saying today, I've submitted a written brief which details a great deal of information and research, so you'll have sources for all these things I'm saying today. And I'll encourage you all to look into that. It's good reading. I wrote it myself. 16 is the least arbitrary age for all of these reasons. If we want to uphold a commitment to democratic rights, if we want to be, you know, if not leaders in our community, at least followers of the Constitution, I think looking at the age of 16 is worthy of consideration. Again, I'll mention the possibility of allowing municipalities the chance to set their own voting age, and other towns and hamlets in the Northwest Territories will be having elections soon. Perhaps it's not ready... This isn't something you can implement that quickly, but you could certainly look for future opportunities to do so. And there are a number of scholars internationally who I'd be happy to put you in touch with, who can tell you about what they've had going on. I will mention, just in closing, that the countries that have enacted this, none of them have gone back. When they do this, they always stick with it.
Thank you very much, and thank you for mentioning your written submission. We do have it in our package, and we will be discussing it later today. So thank you again.
Excellent.
I do not have any further questions from the floor at this time. I'll give one more call-out. Oh, Mr. Hawkins has another comment. So back to you, sir.
No, no. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the comments by the presenter. I will say that, you know, you can say something else about an entitlement until the cows come home, but I mean, we have to draw an age. So I would just say, I want to stress, the age majority, I think, is either 18 or 19 in Canada. I'm not going to look it up, but I mean, I'm certainly close enough to say I feel comfortable about that. Yeah, we have to draw the specific age. Is maturity a challenge? I think that's a reflection that we're all going to have to have. I mean, you can say, you know, and I'm using this as an illustration, you know, say, one of my sons was very mature at age 16, one of my sons was not, you know, mature at 16. You know, one of them reaches 24, is brilliantly mature, one of them reaches the ages of 24, is not. So I mean, maturity and ability is an individual issue, as an example. And that's strictly the illustration, which is saying, are we going to wait till people are mature, and we're going to say 16 is mature enough to vote, or 18 is mature enough to vote, or, you know, where do we do that? I think that is challenging as well. So I mean, it wouldn't be fair to base it on that. But I just don't think, like I said, weighing it... If you're going to use the human rights perspective, then I don't think 16 is the right number then. Then we should be just getting, waiving all voting ages, so... And then, so I... Point being is that I don't think it's a fair argument. We can argue that the cows come home. But anyway, again, I thank you for your passion. We have to draw an age, and right now, I'm more comfortable with the age majority until more makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Alexi, do you have anything to say in response?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I can expand a little on the specificity of the human rights argument. There are two relevant sections of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms here. Section 3, again, that every citizen of Canada shall have the right to vote, and section 1, which says that these are rights that can be reasonably limited, only insofar as they can be justified in a free democratic society. only insofar as they can be justified in a free democratic society. In other words, under section 1 of the Charter, there can still be limitations on the right to vote. But through a court precedent that has been set in cases like Frankby, Canada, in 2019, which granted ex-Patriot Canadians the right to vote, the precedent was set that if you want to withhold voting rights, if you want to keep people from voting, citizens from voting, you have to be the one to provide that good reason. You have to be the one to provide that evidence. And with the wealth of evidence showing that 16 and 17-year-olds are ready to vote, will do so with maturity, it's hard to justify denying them to franchise. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you very much for your passionate presentation. I do not believe we have any further questions at this time. So what I would like to do is just thank everyone who presented here today as part of our review of the Chief Electoral Officer's report on the administration of the 2023 general territorial election. So we are going to conclude our public proceedings. Thank you.